Regular council meeting started, it's Monday, October 4th, 2021.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call these.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Yeah.
Alright, so from now on, we have to approve the agenda before we move on. So give me a motion, someone to approve the agenda.
Move.
And the second someone. Okay, this is where we get a chance to change anything or eliminate something if you don't like something. I guess that's protocol. We've been haven't done it since I've been around, so. Okay, let's vote on approving the agenda, please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
The consent agenda is the minutes from the September 20th city council meeting, the minutes from the September 27th closed session. A motion to approve accepting the resignation of part-time officer Greg Hall. A motion to approve a pay estimate number one for the I-80 water main relocation project. We have the claims and the July monthly financial report. Give me a motion, someone to approve. Nick? Okay. So Greg Hall has been a part-timer for quite a while. He's accepted a job where he cannot be a police officer. He's an investigator, so. He has to resign. That's, that's the reason for that. And if Cory, if that's wrong, let me know. Water main project relocation. This is just the first. I thought they were done with that.
They are.
Yeah. Okay. I have no input there. Any other comments?
Is that the total of that?
I don't know. What is, what is the total of that, Dave?
So if we look on the total complete on the summary in the top right.
So this is the whole job?
This is the whole.
Okay. Okay.
That's, that's why we're F man payment number one.
That's a reimbursable expense by the DOT. Any other comments, questions?
Do we have any idea how long that, that might be before we repay?
Thirty days is usually what they tell us.
Cool. Is there any sort of guarantee or bond or?
Two years.
Three years?
Two years.
Two, okay. How far did it have to get moving?
Certain areas were moving about forty feet.
Should be the knowing that fifteen years ago. Oh, okay. Any other comments from the consent agenda? None. Let's go, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
All right, and communications open forum. This is the time where the public can speak to us for any reason. We can listen to you. But we cannot take action. Anyone on Zoom or in the room? Speak to us. Hearing none, I'm gonna move on to item eight. The non-consent agenda is resolution 2040 approving Adam Kofo to the position of city administrator. Give me a motion, someone. Nick and Jerry. It was actually a decently pleasurable interview process. I thought it went well. Out of fourteen applicants, I think the cream of the crop rose to the top. So. I'm ready to approve. Any other discussion? All right, let's go, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2041 is approving the employment agreement for the city administrator. Adam Kofo. Motion, please, someone. Colton.
Second.
Tom Dean will second. So we've all had the contract to look, look it over two or three times. I initially gave it to Adam. A little, little bit of feedback and then. Very little to add to what our original proposal was and his original proposal. Well, this is where we're at. Any other comments?
When's this start today?
November 30th. Can't try to think of anything else. He and I, there wasn't a lot of back and forth. Not much back and forth.
No, we gave him everything.
By the way, the Tipton City Manager gets a hundred and fifteen thousand, not the eighty-six that you were.
One minute, a hundred and five.
Yeah. This is for what, ninety-two thousand? Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's vote to approve Adam's contract then, please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Yes.
All right. Um, I imagine he'll be in once in a while. Next up is. Discussion items.
No.
Where am I? First reading, all right. ATV ordinance. First reading of ordinance seven eighty-three, many chapter seventy-five. Give me motion, please, someone. ATV ordinance. Nick?
Second.
Jerry? Cory? Took what the Cedar County's ordinance inserted the word West Branch as needed anywhere and tweaked. Couple things, maybe, I'm not sure, the snowmobile stuff. To roll it all into this particular all-terrain and snowmobile chapter. I think you did a good job, so. Is there any discussion? This is a first reading. I have nothing to add, nothing to. Nothing to add, so. All right, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes, sorry. Sorry.
That's all right. All right, discussion. Waste wastewater treatment project. It's on our tablets here. Dave's come up with a slightly modified from the last time we saw, I think.
Leslie asked me for nothing to schedule. We have a few things that we needed to shift around in the environmental review to drive this with the SRAF process. Land acquisition that we recently completed with the neighborhood north, northern Compo site. And we're going to have to proceed with the environmental reviews and plan for position in the project completed. So they are now ready to go on that. That does shift us back a little bit. We've given Matt some preliminary plans to review and have on here for December, discuss ninety percent plans. January, we have plans available to bidders and take bids in February and start the project in March. Gets them out there right after the snow is finished. And we have from March of twenty-two to August of twenty-three. As the period where we have the plant built and then we have to comply with the new limits. So that's our period to get it done and get it working. It's just current with the schedule. We did send in a modification to DNR already because once we get close to construction, they won't give you an adjustment on the schedule that is keeping you fine. So we might have requested that we would ship it back now. Usually we're putting it up front. It's just in the process. They don't want to ship them. So that's all been taken care of this since the paperwork last week. Schedule and permit. Proceeding according to the schedule. Questions?
So. We go through all this. And we spend all this money. And on August 1st, 2023, it says compliance date for new fluent limits. What if? All the stuff we got done worked. Who's on the up then?
So what we're looking to comply with is pneumonia and this process that we're putting in have been put in numerous facilities throughout the state that do have process guarantee on it. So. Issue. Go to the conversation with the supplier. Address Kevin's assistance, I'm sure.
Well, I mean, I guess I don't, I don't really understand that. We're not really buying anything from anybody, are we? It's just a pawn that we're making. And I mean, we're, we're taking a process. But we're not like, it's not like I went and bought a Smith and Wesson gun and now it doesn't fire. You know, we're just, we just took somebody's idea and implemented it, correct?
Yes.
But the DNR approved the process to meet the limits, correct? So they believe it's gonna work too.
So the process is pretty straightforward. We're going back to the relatively insulated environments.
I understand how it all works. I'm just saying, what if we do all this and it doesn't work?
Well, Colton, I don't tell you on that because we haven't run into that situation.
That's good to hear.
This, this process is going this route because this is a tried and true process.
Not though.
It's part of the reason we selected this other one, too.
Any anticipated or are there historically delays that cause delays?
You've heard of COVID.
Bad soil? What?
As if you've heard of COVID, right? That's caused a little bit of havoc with shipping and manufacturing.
Find an Indian artifact or something like that with that?
That's where I buy that.
Yeah, so that's this environmental reason we're talking about. We have two things that we have to go to where they have to do some investigations and that intent is to do that. But certainly if we run into a situation where we find a family phone out there and say, we are required to stop. Investigations and whatnot, but we don't amend our schedule.
The DNR would be amenable to modifying a permit if.
If we run into something.
Want to sound like that?
Yes. That has happened as opposed to both of them.
Yeah, Boston, New York found a mammoth phone.
Des Moines had something. They found something too. Des Moines had something weird happen too. I will tell you, Dave just designed the thirty-two million dollar one in Corvina and it works great. Perfect.
Um, my, this is just a discussion item, so that's, thank you for the update. Are we expecting to get? A construction? Observation contract? Have we already done that or?
We did that with the agreement that we signed for design construction services.
Anything else to ask?
Okay.
So let's move on to. Yeah, Cedar Johnson Road.
We've been back and forth with the county on this for a while. Looked through the plans, put together the roundabout. There were some items in there that seemed like maybe I weren't. Fully accounted for, so we wanted to make sure that as we. Roundabout, if you see on the third page, we want to make sure that we're doing those evenly, that the prices are starting to get close together. And we discussed previously that that was the case, we just tried to do a roundabout. So we have gone through and put together the cost estimates and split that into city and county share the same way. And you'll see the last page of the roundabout estimate within the city and county. Earlier in the year. And then if you look at the roundabout option on the colorful sheet, the second sheet, that has some adjustments. Looking at the comparison between the turn lane and the roundabout, the last four columns, these columns are put in the county and city portions for the turn lane and the roundabout. For the rundown, you'll see at the bottom the total costs. In fact, everything in for the turn lane is about one point two six million. And for the roundabout, about one point four nine. So it is a couple hundred thousand less. And the city's portion for the turn lane is estimated to be about four hundred and nineteen thousand. Construction and acquisition down to the portal of design is about forty-two. When we look at the roundabout, number we compare that to would be forty-two to six one. We're at a point where the county wants to proceed with their project. We want to have it under construction at the same time as the last phase of the highway. So they're looking to make a decision on which option to go with. So it also influence. Who does the design if we leave it as is Anderson Glover will pick up the roundabout design and finish that out. Do you want to go with turn lane? You have the city. That is the summary. I'm hoping to mention questions on this.
On the turn lane, Dave, how? I see we're, we're gonna move local roads to the north.
How will they lower?
Yes.
And how far?
We're about five or six feet at the high point in that area. That's part of the reason we're pushing it forward because we are linking that driveway out a little bit and also trying to keep coming straight at the intersection.
Now, the roundabout would have been more severe, wouldn't it?
The roundabout had a little bit longer area of having lower just because that roundabout tilted. So it has to fit in on one end and then it just creates a pretty wide, long area that has to be moved. Whereas the turn lane, it's linear, so you don't have to. But they do both require a fair amount of explanation. If you look on there, so if we're pushing the turn line further to nowhere, that's a little bit more. So you just wrote that the excavation form, which is the second item down, that just. They're totally forced to send as far as. We have two thousand yards, so. Twenty thousand yards compared to fifteen thousand yards.
It's like Main Street to the east is about the same on each one of them. Looks a little longer would be. Am I reading that correct?
About the same. If you look at where I need to respect the parking lot.
Yeah. Roundabout sees savings if we didn't go so far to the south.
We can pull a little bit of concrete out of there, replace that with rock. There were a few other things that we wanted to adjust this on, but we didn't have it drawing. So some of that's reflected on the.
I don't see a white item here for land acquisition.
It's at the bottom. Acquisition, it's just another construction. So below all of the Excel spreadsheet, there's a construction tool on the left that's involved. Just below, that's its acquisition.
Well, the roundabout's about double. In of acquisition than ninety versus forty-five? Thousand, is that right?
No.
Oh, twenty thousand.
Still double, but.
So on the second page, I see the city's portion of a turn lane at four eighty-two plus. And the city's portion of a roundabout is six eleven seven. Is that about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar difference?
Thirty.
Hundred and forty thousand. Hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
You skipped that class. I failed one of the two.
My brain got fried on calculus.
It's not much.
Hear me out.
Go ahead.
I think the bulk of our growth is gonna, gonna go out that direction. Because unpopular as a roundabout is, a roundabout is going to be able to. Hold more growth than most turn lanes are gonna be able to. It's gonna keep us from ever having to probably put stop light up there or stop signs or any of that thing. It'll keep traffic. I. If you go up there where they put the new roundabout. There on Scott Boulevard in Musketeen. See how nice that traffic moves through there and how much room it is and how. As much as I don't like roundabouts, that was by far the best decision they could have ever made.
I've always thought the roundabout would be the best thing and then talked about the turn lane. I thought, okay, I give up on the roundabout. I'm just fine.
Let's take a vote.
Where are we getting the money? Or what?
Good question. So we were all wondering the roundabout months ago.
Joey never went.
Then the price went from three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Another aspect of that was we were looking to borrow money from the county and get it back over three years. It's not an option.
Okay.
That didn't fit for our budget.
I guess that's the other question, Dave. And maybe you don't know the answer. Maybe we haven't done that road yet. But we're not really talking about borrowing six hundred thousand. We're talking about borrowing one point four nine three and then they'll pay us back.
I talked to the county about that. They would have, they have funds available already that they bonded for and they would do that during construction.
Okay.
That was discussed.
Okay.
Okay, so. If we choose a roundabout version, you said you would not design it, you would not administrate it, correct? It would be.
Anderson, good job of working with the business. I already have one five thousand designed to it that Anderson has put forth, so that's not reflected in here. The county would look to try to get different version of the course.
If we don't take the roundabout.
Yes.
But then we'd have to pay you to design the turn lane, right?
So there's a design fee regardless.
And we have some expense with you designing, designing the turn lane.
We've got maybe forty-five hundred dollars in maintenance analysis.
So this ten percent engineering, is that, that's the design?
That's for comparisons. I don't know if we give that part into it. Just to do them both. I'm trying to get a design and output there. It's probably. See that for the.
What's their timeframe, Dave?
Their timeframe is they would like to have construction started next spring. They have a contractor on the contract already for their phase. But they don't believe they're going to start. They were looking at having Colbert's put in this fall. They don't want to mess with the temporary road in the maintenance over the winter. So they're likely going to start in March or April.
So we're looking at basically the same construction schedule as when our two of them is starting.
Yes. And they would like to have that road closure for that segment of Cooper Hoover Highway as well as intersection all at once.
Only makes sense.
No, yeah, no doubt.
Still unclear what we're looking at out of our pocket. So the roundabout scenario, the six hundred eleven, six hundred and twelve thousand ish? Plus some engineering fees?
The six twelve should include.
Turn lane has all, all the estimated engineering costs in it too, right? So if I'm understanding this right, if we don't take the, if we don't do the turning lane, we're gonna have to pay some of the portion of the engineering that's already been done for that. Which is gonna add to the turning lane cost.
Yes, it would.
Yeah.
Got a sixty-fourty split on that one time? Is that still the case?
Probably easiest number to look at, maybe the combination is one of these. globalization.
Oh, Johnson County will be putting any money into the west side of Cedar Johnson Road.
Yes, we split it on county line. So there are some costs associated with that though, as we've asked to have the town not be responsible for it. To have put in the other in that section since that's all we continue to go on in the future. We want to pay for the rural section. There's also a couple of intakes. You can see there's an agenda line on the south end of that. North-south turn lanes. Everything going south, they don't want to pay. Because that's part of the section.
Would that curb, would that intake be there on a roundabout also?
They would have some storms who were in there for the roundabout, water because both road from the north and west both drop at that point. So if that was a fire, we'd have to get water across. But there are storms who require.
What are you? What's the proposal for the center of the roundabout?
They have, put in here some. Chevron. Colored concrete truck. Twenty-two thousand dollars worth of that media.
Is that the fifteen foot wide apron and, but not the center?
Yes.
The center would be concrete, I assume?
I don't know that they developed it to a point where they're looking at my hobby.
Yeah, you gotta have something to block people from looking through.
They put a big amount of dirt.
Yeah, I haven't even been there yet.
Yeah, so just put big old dirt.
I mean, there's a great opportunity to put something cool there. But probably not in this project. Or those are all little places. They got money.
Yeah, it costs a lot of money to put the, put the nice stuff in the middle.
Okay. Where would we get this money from?
That was.
So when would that project be done?
We're looking at having it constructed probably by October, November.
Drop off. Also, some of the stuff.
All the action.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that drop off, but I don't. It's not the whole amount of that. Well, we couldn't we couldn't use tip money to pay for pay for the stuff on the west side of the county line. We'd have to we should make it clear that we're paying for stuff in in the city, you know, limits, no matter what it is. I just saw that.
That's possible, right?
We can we'll make I agree. We can make sure that everything we're paying for is in the city.
Why can't we tip the other side?
Yes, that the county, if you go, if you if you're not in the city, the county has to prove you. You don't want to do that. Yeah.
Cross contamination. Um, so how much could be tipped?
The majority of the cities with those three things that I talked about, the curb and gunner off that on that call, it's west side, tormentage. It's above what they was supposed to be designing with it.
So let's have the money for that. Turn lane, you're not in the school, correct?
So far, yes, we do have that. We haven't rescinded that. Resolution. No. I'm not sure what to ask next.
Can you talk to Maggie?
Need to figure out how we're gonna pay for.
Either.
Pay for either option.
So you pay for the turn lane, you probably you figure the rest of it out.
It's only like a hundred and twenty nine thousand difference.
Yeah, that's it.
I mean, it's it's a lot of money, but if in the grand schemes of things, it is not a lot.
And the the actual road project is already in the urban renewal plan and the area is already in the urban renewal plan. So we don't have to do any amendments to the plan to make that work.
Give away a hundred thousand dollars for a free driveway. We have to.
Dave, I got a question for you. Um, Kroll is doing the second, you know, part part two. They did part one. What would be the chance if we got a bid out, they give us a sweetheart deal because they have their equipment here?
I had that conversation with Neil. He said that you need to bring in bill material. And you're taking a fair amount out of this hill site. Feeling to them to not have to go off site to bring that in. aggressively because off site mobilization should be cheaper. It's a extension of the project. So the traffic control, the coordination, project management, all those things shouldn't vary less. But at the same time, they're probably wanting to figure, we're not going to go down to our cost. We're going to go less than we can get it. So have some profit in there. So it's it's tricky. Uh, they've got uh, got time and they want to have that material available. With the two projects moving around, I think they would have been pretty aggressive. That's the theory.
The excess material, the excess material. Is there a plan for where that goes? They haven't they've been used throughout the project or business got to come down so much. All that extra material, is there a place for it to go or?
Whether we're kind of the whole off cost to get rid of it or if there's use on this other project, contractor worked on a deal and said they get the same subcontractor, the same general contractor. There's a lot of different scenarios. Certainly there is a potential that if we get this bid before they start that work. The contractor that sees the value.
So it could be used a half mile to the west pretty cheaply.
But we don't stop by it somewhere. We're not ready for the rest of it.
Not if it all happens at once. It could all happen at the same time. If this gets bid in January, February.
I'm thinking to the.
Okay, um, does I'm liking the lot roundabout again. Anybody have any thoughts roundabout turn lane?
Let's take a vote so we sell it once and for all. We don't come back and argue about this.
We were unanimous last time. And I see a show of hands, all those in favor of the roundabout. Is your hand up now or not?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the of the uh, turn lane option?
I don't know. I really don't. I I don't have a favorite right now.
So it's a six to five, six to one.
The only thing that worries me is this is gonna end up costing at least a half million. Where's that gonna leave all of our other projects? Where's that gonna leave our water main project on the east side of town? I know we're getting forced. We have no choice. But I don't wanna. Drop that either.
I think our plan on that was to.
Borrow money.
Some money over the next two to five years. This could do it the same way. It's definitely both the projects tippable. So the county could actually pay for some of this. That's I don't know how long we can try. We have to incur the debt. We have to borrow the money to pay for it. Or budget it.
Yeah.
Or budget a major portion of it.
Yeah, you could have. Let's get. I don't know what the water main cost, but you could borrow up from your general fund and pay yourself back. That's still the same way. Just gotta talk to Maggie and see how we can. We gotta get the cost for everything. By the time we have it.
So if we tip this, that's fine, but it's it's a, you know, it's five, six hundred thousand dollars. I'm not saying that's not a lot of money. But I don't want to drag out Tiff on that for twenty years to pay off something.
Five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if we do that.
I don't know if you can do that.
Well. Not to steal something from her, maybe, but it sounds like you can.
That's exactly where I was getting at.
Financially, I don't know if you could do that. Say that again? And he's talking Chris.
Yeah.
Remember, he said that they did some straight outright. Five years paid for.
Yeah, instead of doing a twenty year.
Okay, so if we could get a somewhat of an answer from Maggie in the next. Yeah, these guys need to get rolling.
You see it like that?
You might need an actual resolution. They might.
Because we have to do a twenty eighty here.
I know, that's why. It all has to kind of work out together, but we can't drag our feet. Can't can't take till the end of December to think and say, you need to know by the maybe the end of October, the middle of December.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we have a discussion item next go around about. The capital improvement projects that we really want to do in the next two to four years, right? So the east side's water mains, the the.
Widening.
Wide creek widening.
And this.
And this.
Cedar Johnson Road means.
And and then see if we can bring Maggie in the meeting after that and see if we can come up with a spitball way of paying for this.
Okay.
And then if she says it's impossible, you guys are nuts, then we know we gotta go back to the drawing board. If she says you can do it, but it's tight, then we have a decision made. We we borrowed money and made it tight before. And, you know, I think this time we might be getting a lot more for being tight for a year or two than we got before. You know, we got safety issues on the east side of town. At some point, this this is gonna become a safety issue, you know, and in our town flood. You know, if we're gonna if we're gonna go deep in the debt.
That project may not require. Just some cash flow possibly.
Right. But we gotta have that discussion and figure it out. Does that does that make sense?
The other the other thing that was brought up when we were interviewing Chris was the hat. Our our other projects related to the sewer project. All those projects had to be done and paid for prior to us getting money. Or being able to use the money for that. Is that true? Yes, that's correct. I did. We just closed ours out in Corvino. We just got the money. Sponsored project, same thing you guys can do.
So the downstream line will have the next month.
No.
Yeah.
Two front.
If it's done in August.
I thought we had a strategy to pay for that before that that other pipe dream ever even came down though.
We had two hundred thousand from Covey Park. That's all we had.
Then we have some stormwater.
You have stolen money, yep.
There. I thought it was a hundred or two hundred thousand, something like that.
Yeah, a hundred something.
Probably. I think there's a couple hundred thousand or so.
We can bring that back too when you guys want to. But we have for that.
Bring that back. I don't want to wait another year.
What's that?
Downstream widening.
So.
What do you mean, we're in a drought right now? What do you mean?
Could we go ahead and move on that? On that project and then get reimbursed? Or?
But if we could do a project and come back. The green part is.
Oh, really?
No, it's it's the treatments we're putting in there.
Okay. Phase one maybe could be done upgrading.
Right.
So we do need money. We do need money for that, say, phase one of the grading downstream rating. Yeah. Okay, you digress. So uh, maybe I can make a call to Maggie and let her know what's coming up. To uh, start thinking about what we're what we're looking for, how to pay for this, the east side. Cash flow, a couple of other projects.
So the other thing that I guess we'll need to do is I don't know who we direct all this to, but we'll we'll have to help. Obviously, we got a rough cost of what this is gonna cost. Does somebody know what that east side projects were gonna cost? I know they were putting numbers together.
Yeah, last minute, I think. I think that suggesting of two million.
But they start, we're gonna start doing roads and stuff with it too. So and then. And then we gotta have a cost of what the creek widening is gonna be, you know, pretty. And I just want to make sure that when we sit down and have our discussion, that we're somebody, somebody's getting us the information, you know?
You think that's north of four hundred fifty thousand, the creek widening?
Refigure it.
Yeah, they wouldn't have any mobilization.
Not across the creek. Throw a tube and cross the creek.
Hey, owns all the land around it, isn't he?
Okay, uh, this is great, Dave. Just what we're looking for. Are we looking for our services? Well, we don't know yet.
We're on the boat. It's already covered with the county. We just have to look at, we need the agreement, journey costs and construction costs.
Looking right now, the roundabout's our favorite again.
While we looked at it, so mostly wanted to make sure that we're very good service.
So I got an interesting question for you. And and don't consider you might get the job if it was a turn lane. If this was your town and you got to pick whatever you wanted. Would you rather have the turn lane or would you rather have the roundabout? And you, because you have more design, traffic design experience than all of us put together.
So I'll tell you where the complications comes in is if they have to do any repairs on the roundabouts. Messes things up. We get quite a detour. So if we want to address that in some fashion, for like this, such you had. Room to do a separate lane through there in order to get traffic through while you're working on the section. That's something that doesn't come up when we move. That's something that comes up down the road. We're looking at one right now where there's a grid right off. Custom weight to return. So you have the needs with it. So that there's a aspect to this that's that's difficult to plan for. And that's the drill. If we have issues out here, that that'll be a bit of a problem, but with the street network, when there's another way to get back. So there's there's that complication given the location, but there's always the benefits. Forming traffic, forming traffic gets safer from the collision aspect where you have people slowing down, want to throw it around. From that regard, the safety definitely promotes roundabout. Whereas the maintenance aspect of it, there's a cost and a little bit of an issue with the.
You could, you would kind of have that same issue even with this, if you had to do repairs to have the road.
Right, then we've got three lanes there. So you can usually pull it off a lane, show at least one way traffic.
So my question about the roundabout. If we're gonna do it because of the future, then this roundabout isn't actually big enough. You're gonna need one like up there on Mount Vernon where it's double lane. We're gonna have a lot of traffic.
Thirty and highway. I don't know. Coming together. That's.
You know, this isn't.
Looking at trying to get that down for single wing roundabout. Truck traffic when they have two lanes and they turn semis.
I don't get.
So that's we're we're applying for that right now to get that. A bit, they have a lot of traffic.
Okay, I I don't know anything about, I'm just.
Is this particular roundabout or will it be designed for semi? I mean, when the interstate closes, obviously you've got to get a semis across there. Yeah.
So this is almost.
While they're going for it.
This is almost gonna be identical to the one on Scott Boulevard now. It looks like, pretty close.
It's pretty close. So the roundabout's probably a little bit more comparable if you can out. Have someone draw up what you're doing, counting this one out there. This is almost a roundabout. Pretty much a reproduction of that one.
Have you been on the one on Scott Boulevard?
Oh, every day since it's open.
Yeah.
Place of death.
It flows sweet, doesn't it?
I even follow the semi through it.
Yeah.
He can handle it very well.
Well, if it's like the one on Holiday Road, you just drive across the middle of it with your semi. There's no getting around that one.
That's why there's nothing in the middle.
That's why I'm afraid if you don't.
Unless, that's a mini roundabout. You don't want to do that.
So there's no provision for trail yet? Is there any sort of trail or sidewalk? Is that?
We have, if you look on the concept of the turn lane, there's two thin lines on the south side.
Right.
We have some provisions in there for crosswalks to consider the double yellow lines on the east side and south side of the turn lane. That's where the sidewalk will go. It's not, you put in at this point, you want to put that in. You want to do something, but that's just a maintenance issue.
I walked on the turn.
On the roundabout.
Now they're going to grade out. The grading out for, add for that trail.
Would we grade out on our side of, for that trail?
That's shown in the, uh, the roundabout, you know, turn lane options currently.
We grade that.
It's generally graded, but it wouldn't have this first.
Okay.
Contend to see Dave on, on both these, how often does that actually that normally get eaten up all, everything that's in there for the continuously. Oh, and yeah, unfortunately.
Sometimes it goes way over. Clay material that can dry and excavate.
Yeah, how, how far down is, I mean, is this around about eight feet? Is it eight feet down?
It's in that, I think that's five days.
How much is it gonna affect that driveway on that house that sits there?
Both of them have a pretty good impact on that because we're lowering that. It doesn't want to have it too steep. So they're trying to keep it at five percent, push it backwards. So yeah, that's, that's been the system.
Hey, um, is there any, any chance that, uh, use some soil sampling on, on that area just to get an idea of what's in there? Or will they be four?
I'm not sure what the county's done in design.
Yeah, okay.
We're born, few borns.
Well, I know what the dirt was where, where I'm at. And once you get down about six feet or so, it turns to baby crap. It's like you say, that needs to be dried. You don't have a place to lay it down and dry it out. You gotta haul it away.
Okay, Dave, uh, so I'm gonna call Maggie just to warm her up for what we talked about tonight. This week. We get some input from her at some point. I know.
He's gonna, you know, approve a bunch of stuff and then he walks in and goes, what? One point eight million dollars.
It's still our call.
Oh, I know, but I'm just, it's not like a.
No, I'll keep him there. He'll watch. I'll, I'll call him and tell him.
Sure, he'll watch, but just.
He can go online and look at our meeting too. I bet it will. All right. Thank you, Dave. Good, good job.
Make sure you sign, sign tonight so it's all official.
Okay, um, we are at the end of our meeting. City staff, anyone? Cory, Matt? Nick? It's pretty quiet, so not gonna bug you anymore. Um, Kevin? Mayor and council. Got an interesting call, phone call about the Kroll site on Friday. So I'll be talking to you individually about that eventually. About the Kroll site. Nothing to get our hopes up about yet, so. Um, anybody else? All those in favor, say aye.